Call the media, call the meeting to order for the planning board for August tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Alphabetical roll call who's here, starting with Clark.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here, Amy.
Amy Glassmeyer here.
Andrew Hobson here.
Chris Plex here.
Okay, great, okay. On with us tonight is our planner Laura Lind, our town council Carolyn Murray, and Angela Guiso taking our minutes. Lauren, can you start by explaining to the public how they can participate?
Yes, we utilize the Q and A function at the bottom of the screen that you'll see for public comment. What we do ask is if there's a particular item that you wish to speak to, there will be a designated public comment period for that. You can leave written comment in the chat, or you can just wish to indicate that you wish to address the board. We will ask that you state your name and address for the record, whether it's written or spoken when we promote you to speak to address the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. I will jump right into it. Our first matter tonight is going to be a continuation of a hearing regarding five thirty-four Beechwood and thirty-two Doll Street that's at the request of the applicant. So I have a motion to continue it to September seventh at six thirty.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Hold on, favor.
Hi.
Tom Callahan, hi, Amy.
Amy Glassmeyer.
Andrew Hobson, hi.
Chris Plex.
Plex, hi.
Okay, thank you. So our next matter is continuation of the hearing, site plan review for forty-six Border Street. Who do we have with us tonight for that?
I'm just looking through the audience here for a moment, please. Oh, we have Susan Hoadley.
Is Adam here?
I don't see Adam in the audience with us.
Susan, is anyone else with you?
Oh, we have, I see, we have Gabrielle Padilla here, from the engineering firm.
I see Kevin has joined us as well.
Yes, thank you.
All right, who's gonna, well, between Gabriel and Susan, just to bring the board up to speed, we do not have our peer review done as for tonight. They didn't get the materials in time to submit anything for tonight. So we are not going to be in a position to close the hearing. I would expect that this to be relatively short discussion, but Gabriel and Susan, I'll give you the floor if there's anything in particular you want to bring to our attention for tonight. Please do.
Yeah, hi, good afternoon, Gabriel. So yeah, no, we're still waiting on Weston Sampson's review letter. We just wanted to go over any changes and plans here from last meeting. So during the last meeting, it was requested that we do a detail of the island. Now again, I, I would have liked to distribute all this with all the Weston and Sampson stuff with it, but just as a matter to put everyone's feet here as to where, where we are in that. Can I, can I share my screen, please?
Lauren, can you ask Gabriel to, to show himself? Aren't, aren't the people that are at our meetings and in the public are supposed to be present physically?
It's not a vote of the pond policy that we've established. So I'll determine, I'll leave it up to Gabriel if he's able to, but he does have ability to screen share.
Okay.
I can screen share. I do not have a video, but if it's a requirement, I'll make sure to have one another time.
All right, what is, what is it you'd like to show us tonight?
Can you blow that up, please?
Everyone see the plan?
A little bit more, that we can't read anything on it.
So what I want to put the attention to is to the landscaped island that we have. So it's going to be an edge of pavement, and it's going to have a landscaped area, pretty much. You're going to have bike racks on either side, but there's not going to be a walkway for safe in between it. We labeled all the radii and all the lengths and dimensions and all that. With the comments that we got from Weston and Sampson on the conservation commission, we needed to do another change, which was on the crushed shell pavement. The original design that we had was a lot smaller than this. We just adjusted it in order to comply with CONCOM regulations. And as far as plan goes, that, that's pretty much it. There's not much to, to really discuss here at the moment. But those things that could be changed were changed.
Could you back the map out now a little bit so we can see when you're talking about the island?
Sorry. We have plant, take plant itself.
All right, does anybody on the board have any particular questions they want to ask? I have two that perhaps these two folks can't answer, but can be passed along for the next meeting. I'll, I'll start with, Chris, I see your hand up, so we'll start with you tonight.
Very quickly, in the last meeting where we were looking at this, I asked if there had been any confirmation that the foundation under where you planned to build was a different construction, a different age than the foundation that had collapsed a few years ago. I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to close that out.
Not at the moment. Actually, Adam was looking into that. You know, it's fortunate he didn't make it today, but that will be part of the next package that we sent over.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Chris? Amy, I see your hand up.
Yes, I wasn't clear when Chris mentioned the, the island, what the significance is of there not being a walkway. And so I want to understand a little bit more about what he is describing here.
In terms of?
Well, so for example, I'm not, I'm not sure if you're telling us this, that there's not going to be a sidewalk in front of the, the parking area for the event space. And then the, the question would be, of course, where will the public go when they are traversing from the other side, from the east side to the west side of the, of the area? How are they going to get across? Are they going to walk through the, through the parking lot?
I believe Hoadley has an answer for that.
All right, Susan.
Okay, may we share a screen?
Yeah.
And once you have a colored diagram up. Okay, does everybody have a colored map in front of them?
You do.
Okay, so this is a, this is an in-progress drawing that Ms. Glassmeyer, I'm hoping will shed some, some light onto your question. This, what this diagram has been worked up to show is the way that the, that the sidewalk engages the edge of the property. Gutter line is the portion that comes up to what could be considered the sidewalk. And then the pedestrian way is shown in light orange, which is the buffer between the street and the property line of our proposal. So the, I think this drawing is probably one that is, might, might shed better light on that.
Well, is, is there going to be on-street parking there that goes over into the walkway like happens on Border Street now?
Along there, no, no, that's considered to be a pedestrian way, or at the, yeah.
Well, everyone knows that like along, all along Border Street today, the, there is a, you know, there's a designated striped-off area to walk, but cars, cars park into it and they're intended to park into it. Is that what's going to happen in this particular location?
So that I, I don't think so, but that I would defer to Gabe, who is the keeper of the, the parking strategy.
Yeah, we are not considering any parking on Border Street as part of our parking requirement.
No, I, I, I understand that, Gabe, excuse me, I understand that, but today the public parking area all along Border Street carries over into the quote-unquote walkway. And is that going to continue along this site, or are you actually building a dedicated sidewalk?
No, we're just leaving that buffer strip in the area. We're not building an actual sidewalk. But we're removing the line to discourage.
Okay.
Can I ask another question about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, since we know that people are creatures of habit, unless there is designated, signed, or some kind of demarcation, people are going to park there. So I mean, it's just, it's just what they're going to do. And so are we going to work something out with the Public Safety Office to have it marked so that there be no parking there?
Well, we can, we can certainly put some signs up in the island area with no parking.
I mean, we, we have to be concerned that we don't want to take away existing public parking on the street that exists today. We, you know, this area can ill afford the loss of parking at all, but I, I've, I've always assumed that this parking along Border Street would be the same as it is today.
Our project considers modifications in, at the plot line. Anything beyond that, pretty much we left half is. The parking spaces in that area, again, will put some signage up. Because we, we don't, we don't count parks that area. There is a parking space that you could see to the left. Further up Border Street that does approach, those are existing spots, and those are for the old cell towers. Nothing to do with us. So that's an existing condition, though.
I had a question about the integrity of the wharf as well as Chris did, so I hope you'll be prepared to address that at the next meeting. The other, my other question about parking is, i- if, if an off-site solution is being looked at, is that going to be just for employees, or you are, are you also going to shuttle customers back and forth, or have a valet service?
No, at the moment, we are only, we are only proposing that service for the employee. Following the regulations of, of a parking requirement, we do comply with all the parking, with all the parking requirements in the bylaw. However, the question of additional space for employees popped up, and we agreed to provide ten off-site spaces. But it was something that we agreed upon. It's not something that was within the regulations. Within the regulations, our parking lot complies with all the parking that we need.
Right, somebody, by the way, has some noise going on in the background. I don't know where it's coming from, but Amy, you have another question?
Miss Hoadley wanted to say something first.
Okay.
Susan, you have? Actually, Gabe actually answered the, the question.
Okay, so, so my question then is, I'd like to have a review of this arc where the parking and pedestrians and traffic come together, have a review by the chief of police for safety purposes. We need to know what the dimensions of the sidewalk would be. We want to know if there's some way we can make it as safe as possible.
Anybody else on the board have any questions, comments they want to pass along before the next hearing?
Yeah, quickly, this diagram does a lot to show where the property line is and where the pedestrian zone is out on, on Border Street, as well as the, the vehicle zone. But it doesn't show where the, the, the parking spots could be in front of that island. And I, I think it probably makes sense for the applicant to show, you know, the five spots that would, would, could potentially be there between a pedestrian accessway and their island. As well as where, where they're, where they have this paving material transition strip all on their property, separating the shells from asphalt of the town. There may be other configurations of that that's more beneficial to the, to the overall streetscape design. And I, I don't think it would hurt to make some suggestions for how that could be arranged, either partially on or off the, the locus of the actual property line of the site. So I'd like the applicant to take a look at that also. I think last time I suggested that, that the applicant reach out to Mike Sardina. There's a committee that's working on updating of parking options for, for the harbor. So they would be the experts in how to meld this project into what's being talked about and considered. So I'll make that recommendation again. Mike Sardina.
Thank you, Clark. Kevin?
Yeah, my question is for either the applicant or for Carolyn. I don't see any minimum width on this schematic that's up in front of us with regard to the sidewalk. Is there a minimum width to maintain so that it's considered a sidewalk for a right-of-passage for people on bikes, people walking, people in wheelchairs? Is there a minimum established that must be maintained for it to be considered a sidewalk? And the reason I ask is, A, because I don't see any minimum width measurements on this planning drawing, nor do I see, I, I do see it appears this arc pinches out by where that island is. So that's my question to the applicant or to Carolyn, if, you know, we're calling something a sidewalk, is it in fact meet the definition of a sidewalk? And is there a duty to maintain that width of that minimum for it to be considered a sidewalk?
Um, Gabe, I'd like to let the civil engineer take that one.
Yeah, so ADA does have some requirements on slopes and, and width of sidewalks. However, we, this goes by the existing layout of the road. So the existing right-of-way is where you can accommodate that sidewalk pedestrian safety. We don't do work outside of the property line. That's why all the work is on our side. If there are some, some improvements in those areas, that, that would be, that would need to be discussed, yeah. But as far as roadway improvements, we are, roadway or right-of-way improvements, we are not proposing any.
Um, can I? Kevin?
I, I just want to follow up on that, then, that I'm wondering, what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there's no guarantee there's going to be a sidewalk here for people in the area of this proposed applicant, this proposed work. Is that what I heard?
Well, if, it depends on by what definition we are providing a sidewalk.
Okay, then can I, can I circle back to the beginning of my question? Can Carolyn, can you provide, and you may not have it right now, and I don't expect you to, but can we have a definition for what a sidewalk is per Massachusetts general law or cohesive regulations to consider what we're talking about here, what the applicant's talking about is a sidewalk or not?
I, I can, I can tell you this much currently, at least off the top of my head, I believe that ADA requires a minimum width of a five feet for sidewalk, so that you can actually have someone who is mobility impaired, has enough room to get through. But in terms of there being like a, you know, a state law or a general requirement that there must be a sidewalk, that is not, you know, that's not a set-in-stone requirement. You know, if we were using federal funds or even mass DOT funds to design or, or, you know, reconstruct an existing roadway, they do have what they call complete streets now. You know, where you have to have sidewalks, a bike lane and, and minimum widths for, for the roadway. But, you know, one thing I will say about this particular site is it, there is no existing sidewalk within the roadway layout. And the only body who can create a sidewalk within the layout is, would be the town. It's either that, or you're asking the applicant to provide the sidewalk entirely on their site. And I'm no engineer, but I'm going to assume that that is going to, to interfere with the parking in the drive aisles as well.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Sure.
That it, Kevin?
I, I think this plan as it's put forth here is inadequate from not only a parking standpoint, because there aren't engineered barriers to parking and prevention of parking in areas that aren't designated as parking. I also think from a pedestrian access standpoint, vis-a-vis sidewalks or otherwise, it's inadequate. And even if it doesn't meet the definition, considering the existing sidewalks, applicant should consider doing so on their part to provide what would be minimum to allow access to pedestrians, non-vehicle access in the area of the parking lot that they have shown there in that island, where even on the, on the surface of what this plan is showing, it appears to pinch down. That's all.
Okay. All right, guys, on the planning board, I want to try to wrap this one up because we do have to continue it, but
Yep, just, just a quick comment.
Briefly, Clark.
There is a sidewalk on locus, on the property. It goes along the water's edge, across the front of the building, and then kind of would connect amorphously on the, on the western end. And I, it's right now, this parking lot is a big amorphous, like paved blob that runs into the street, and it's hard to tell what's private property and what's public right-of-way. And I think that the applicant could, could make some suggestions on how the, how the, 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 their design elements on their private property could queue changes within the right-of-way that the town could do. It might end up being just additional striping or improved tweaked striping for parking in, in a dedicated pedestrian area.
Thank you. All right, before we
Can I just ask one more question, Tom? Can we get a table of dimensions for this? I'm sure it must be associated somewhere with this diagram to see what the dimensions are of, of all of this that we've just been presented with. Thank you.
I'm sorry, the dimensions from, on what specifically?
Well, I'd like to see the dimensions of the parking spaces. I'd like to see the dimensions of all that we've just discussed. We've got a kind of beige-colored arc that we talked about, and we've got your little island that we spoke about, and the, the, the parking spacing and, and the distances between cars which are opposite one another. I mean, it's real hard to get a feel for just exactly how tight this is without having a table of dimensions.
Okay, we'll provide that.
Thank you.
All right. Before we move on, is there anybody in the public who has anything they'd like to ask or comment on? Is there anybody out there, Lauren?
Not seeing anything in the Q and A.
Okay, so when is, when are we planning to continue this, to the seventh or to another day, the next day?
Let me take a look. I was planning for the seventh. I think you should, I think you should continue to the seventh.
Yeah, we're looking to the seventh, yes. Well, pending Weston Sampson.
I, I just want to make sure our dance card hasn't already filled up, so. All right, can I entertain a motion to continue it to September seventh at six thirty?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We'll call Clark.
Butler, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I.
Kevin.
Kevin, hi, hi.
Andrew, you're an I.
Andrew Hobson, I.
Chris?
Chris Plex, I.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll see you on the seventh.
Thank you.
All right, okay, you're welcome. Moving along, we, we have a continuation of our hearing, a site plan review for twenty-five and thirty Situate Hill. Lauren, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is our, our peer reviewer and the applicant's team have all gotten on the same page, and there's no further outstanding items or issues. Lauren has circulated a draft for condition, findings and conditions, but I, I don't know if everybody's gotten to take a look at. I'll open it up to the board. Does anybody have any comments, or are we ready to take a vote? Subject, Lauren is, that needs to fill in some of the administrative parts of the decision, but the findings and the conditions are there, ready to go. She has incorporated some of the things we put into the previous decision that we did a year ago for a different applicant, but anybody on the board have any comments or questions about it?
I have no new comments.
All right, are we prepared to take a vote on the findings and conditions? Yep.
That was, that was Chris Plex, I apologize.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry.
In the last time we discussed this project, there was some question about screening for the buildings, so it's screen the buildings from three A. The applicant described I would say a hesitancy to do that because people driving up and down three A aren't looking to their left and right at the scenery. I, I did notice though that when you're merging on a three A from King Street, you're looking straight at the site. So I would like to come back to the discussion of screening for the buildings, because people coming in on King Street, I, I think it would benefit from some additional screening relative to what we saw the first time, which was a couple of trees blocking, I think, one of the buildings. So I wanted to ask the applicant if that's something they would consider.
Chris, they did add a revised site plan that shows trees in front of the three buildings, different from what we saw last time.
Yeah.
The bottom of the, the list of documents on the, the website, our town.
Do, do we have dimensions on those trees?
We, we do. It's shown on sheet four. There's a table. We were originally proposing ten evergreens for screening. We've added twenty-four additional to, for thirty-four. And they're all six to eight feet tall at time of planting green giant evergreens.
Okay, Lauren, maybe you could also just summarize, you know, there was discussion last time about rain gardens and the, you know, the runoff, storm runoff issues. Can you maybe just summarize where we are with those issues?
Yes, at the last time, there were some questions raised about the feasibility of rain gardens to add some capacity to the stormwater system. The applicant did reach out. We had T E C take a look. It was in both the applicant's and also confirmed by the peer review engineer that rain gardens, as you typically would establish, wouldn't be the best suitable option for this site. What the applicant did to address the concern as an option that was particularly, maybe more suiting to the slope and conditions of this particular site was to add the added riprap, which was in the additional site plan. And again, Jeff has, he could speak more to the details on that, but they did take into consideration, they looked into the option of rain gardens, following up with our peer review and, and made some Plan B alternatives to try to address the concerns of the board.
Thanks, Lauren. That's exactly correct. The, well, we, we had stone trenches running along either side of the driveway. So we widened both of those by two feet to a total of seven feet, and we do also have roof drywells specified on the plan. The stormwater counts are conservative because they assume that this property would be developed with twenty percent more impervious than what we're proposing. So for all those reasons, we, we are confident in the calculations, as is the peer, peer review consultant, as he has no further comment.
Thank you. Chris, your hand's still up. You got another question? Nope, okay. Nope, okay. Uh, all right, so what's the board's pleasure? Are you? Ready to vote on the findings and conditions or do you want more time since we just got those circulated today? Uh, we, I'll leave it to you that what you would like to do.
But I, I have that uh, list pulled up. Uh, I, I don't see, nothing really jumps out at me as uh, particularly onerous uh, or unusual in terms of. The findings and conditions.
Okay. Yeah, and as long as we're incorporating the most up-to-date site plan, everything should be addressed. All right, if that, with that said, uh, entertain a motion to approve the finding, the draft finding and conditions subject to Lauren completing the. Administrative and technical aspects of it. Uh, somebody want to make that motion?
I would submit the motion to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second. I second.
All right, thank you. Uh, Clark?
Our brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I.
Kevin?
Kevin Heinai.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
And Chris.
Chris Plexai.
Right. Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
We'll get that, we'll get that decision to you as soon as we can, but uh. Thank you for your cooperation and making those last sets of changes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so um. We are at seven oh four. Uh, although everything is scheduled for six thirty, we have the, the next project on for seven fifteen. Somebody asked in the Q and A, as I said, we'd stick to that seven fifteen. So we can use this time for a couple of administrative things to get them out of the way. I understand we have two sets of minutes for. What was it, June? I forget, I forget what, let me just find Angela's email. We have minutes for July twenty-seven and June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. Can I have a motion to approve both of those or does anybody have any questions or comments or edits to do? Uh, if not, I'll take a motion to approve them. Hello, anyone?
I'll make it a motion to approve the minutes of July twenty-seventh and.
June twenty-two.
And June twenty. I'm still looking at Ju- June twenty-second.
Yep. Okay, second please.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, we'll call Clark.
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I.
Kevin Heinai.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Chris Plexai.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, we'll, we'll jump ahead and let, have Lauren take the floor to give us a, a, a brief update on the Elm Street Corridor Working Group.
Thank you. So the Elm Street Corridor Working Group last met on June twenty-third, um, at which time they voted on a recommended approach for what. They would like to continue to explore for advancing in engineering work for the Elm Street Corridor. It included a concept that. Allowed for um, a slight road diet, which would. Sort of narrow the roadway that is the, the residential portion of the straightaway of Elm Street. It would add a six-foot sidewalk on either side, which currently is approximately four foot um. A variable, not ADA compliant, so there, those sort of pedestrian improvements. It did also recommend an approach to reconfiguring. The intersection that was at the end of the harbor end. Um, since that time. The uh. It's been a bit of a question as to when the, the Elm Street Corridor Working Group was set to sunset the charge of the group. Originally, it had been June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. However, there was um, a vote of the select board at some point in time last year to extend them through August of this year. Um, at this point, I'm not entirely sure of what the directive is or where the Elm Street Corridor Working Group will go, if it will be continued or. Um, you know, continue beyond the end of this month. But at this point, Brian Joyce has been working with um. Sort of Mike Sardina of the group to, to fine tune some of those engineering specific details and we've asked for. A scope of work to get us to the final phasing of engineering design. Typically, if you think about engineering design, we talk about it in uh, percentage phases of readiness. You have about, you know, the concept to twenty-five percent level of design, which is really very rudimentary and sort of looking at. Layout, but then as you progress towards one hu- one hundred percent design, which is when you're ready. To issue permits and have a construction project begin, there's a lot more. Nitty-gritty engineering work that goes in between those two phases. So that's what we've asked to scope out what it would cost to get. This concept level to that construction-ready stage. Um, the other update that we have is that. We had been hopeful that there was a bond bill moving through the state budget cycle that would have implemented. Uh, would have given us um, approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, from state funds to work on the Elm Street Corridor project. The reason for this was we had previously applied for a ground. Uh, grant funding opportunity that was not awarded. We were sort of a runner-up in that category and what the governor proposed was that. They would use our funds to. Fund a lot of these projects that had not been awarded in the past. Ultimately, it didn't make it through uh, the full budget cycle at the state level, so that money is not coming forward. So at this point, we need to. Also identify funding sources. So Elm Street, we do know is in the paving plan for not this upcoming cycle, but the following. Um, and then the determination of whether this select board will support the working group's recommendation as of June twenty-third is yet to be determined.
Does that, does that recommendation include the redesign of the intersection that we kind of scoped out during the hotel project?
It does. Yes.
Good, good, good. Okay, uh, anybody have any comments, Clarky? I, I presume you're still on that committee. I don't know if there's anything you want to add to what's going on.
Well, it, uh, I guess I just, I said this before, but the, the two versions of the Elm Street Corridor redesign that. We reviewed at, at our last meeting and recommended one were um. Conceptual or diagrammatic in nature. Um, so I mean, I think that. Um. The, the, the reality is we have to get into some more details and establish budgets and. And, and when the project becomes more real. Then um. Then people will be more interested um, in what kind of an investment it is and uh, how it supports the goals of the. Town and the master plan and that kind of thing.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, um, with our six minutes remaining, I'll give you a brief update about the zoning bylaw committee. Um, we had our joint meeting with the select board last week. A new course of action has been set to move forward. Uh, the, in, in a nutshell, that there will likely be, there won't be major changes at this fall town meeting. There likely won't be any zoning particles. There may be, you know. Something may pop up that we want to bring something forward, but uh, right now the target is the spring town meeting in twenty-twenty-three. It will be daunting to do all of it, but it's doable. Uh, town council's scope of work has been accepted and they will be starting with a diagnostic and reviewing. Drafts that have been put forward. Um, the bylaw committee is itself, like, we canceled the meeting for uh. This past Monday, the eighth. It will not be a public forum on the fifteenth, next Monday. What was resolved was to possibly do, uh, instead to do some targeted and focused. Public forums on particular topics and subject matters. We're just right now working out what that schedule will be. Um, so um, we, we, but we do definitely have a plan of action where everybody in the bylaw committee and the select board. Were unified in their approach and I, I think it's, we're, we're going to have a good team working together on that, so. Um. More on that as it comes, that I, I will be trying to call a bylaw meet, committee meeting for later this month, uh, just so. We can not lose any momentum uh, amongst us. Um, I see we have a question. Are we still on track to seven fifteen? Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, we're probably going to get started right now, so. Um, get the preliminaries out of the, of the way and get the hearing started, so. Nobody has anything else at the moment. We, we do have uh, some, another thing, we, administration thing we need to do at the end of the meeting, but uh. Uh, right now, this gets a lot of things out of ways, so thank you. So let's go to the uh, public hearing for um, large. Review at eighty North Main Street. Lauren, if you wouldn't mind reading the notice.
Certainly, thank you. Notice of public hearing across the planning board. Pursuant to Master and our law, chapter forty A and section five, three hundred dash five point four of the class zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID. Eight-five-one. Six-one-nine-seven-two-nine-four-nine, passcode two-nine-three-four-one-nine on Wednesday, August tenth, twenty-twenty-two at six-thirty P M for a large house plan review. For property being shown on closet assessors map, E four nineteen seventeen. Eighty North Main Street, closet, Massachusetts, zero-two-zero-two-five. The application is for large house plan review for raise and reconstruct of a single-family home for a new total residential gross floor area of ten thousand three hundred fourteen square feet. The application is submitted by Thomas Hents and Sharon State of one oh four Jerusalem Road, closet, Massachusetts, zero-two-zero-two-five. A copy of the application plans and accompanying documents are on file in the town clerk's office at Closet Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue, with office hours of Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight-thirty A M to forty-thirty P M. Tuesday, eight-thirty A M to seven P M and Friday, eight-thirty A M to one P M. Electronic copies of said application can be obtained by contacting Planning Director Lauren Lind via email at L Lind at closet MA dot org. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated. Signed, Thomas J. Callahan, Chair of Planning Board. Um, representing this application, you have before you Attorney Delisi. You have uh, Susan Holdley uh, from the architecture, Holy Martinez firm, and I believe we also have Carmen Hudson. Um, the property owner is also an attendee. If you wish to join as panelists, I'll give you the option now. You're not required to.
Right, and, and, and reminder to the public, if you want to speak, uh. Say so in the Q and A. You can either ask a written question that'll be read and answered, or you can ask to be promoted to the screen and speak to us directly. All right, so uh, Jeff, I'll. Give you the floor. Started, let us know what we're looking at here.
Oh, thank you so much, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, good evening, members of the board. Uh, my name is Jeff Delisi. I am a lawyer with Aron Berger, Delisi and Harris. Um, before I begin, I just want to make sure my entire team is actually part of the panel. Uh, I believe, Lauren, that um, we have Cara Lamb that needs to be. Added. She's our landscape architect. And then uh, Jacques Le Fevre, uh, who is our um. Our, our contractor, builder.
You should be joining us momentarily. Thank you.
Right, all right, so. Um. Brief introduction. Uh, Tom and Sharon, uh, are clients of ours as well as um. Carmen Hudson of Cavanero Consulting, uh, our engineer, Susan Holy of Holy Martinez, uh, architects. Um, Cara Lamb of Skyline Landscapes Inc. is our uh, uh, lan- landscape architect. And I mentioned Jacques, uh, our builder. A general overview of the project. Excuse me? Uh, a general overview of the project. Um, project's located in Residence B Zoning District. It's uh, the house, uh, the, the property is between Beach Street and Central Cemetery. Directly on Little Harbor. The actual address is eighty North Main. Uh, the lot requirements in this zoning district are thirty-five thousand square feet in area. Fifty feet in frontage and a hundred and twenty-five feet in lot width. Uh, this particular lot is quite oversized. It has uh, more than three times the required lot area. And more than four times the required uh, lot frontage. Um, the property itself, and I know um, I, I know. Um, Carmen will be going over this. Uh, presently contains three substantial buildings. Uh, one is a dwelling having about uh, forty-one hundred and fifty square feet finished floor area, according to the tax assessor. And then there are two substantial detached accessory buildings on the property. Uh, those are presently used uh, for garaging purposes. The existing dwelling itself uh, is, that is a valid pre-existing non-conforming structure. And it's located uh, about eight feet off of the northwesterly side yard in the twenty-foot zone. Um, the concept here, the Hent's concept is to raise all three buildings and reconstruct a single. Building located more in the center of the lot. Which meets all of the dimensional requirements of the zoning bylaw. Um, and notably uh, eliminates uh, the detached buildings and eliminates the non-conformity altogether. So we'd be creating a. A conforming house on a conforming lot. Uh, moving the home away from the left side yard. Uh, in a minute, I will ask my clients to introduce themselves, share their vision, uh, ask Carmen to review the site plan, Susan, the architectural set, Cara, the landscape architect set. But I did want to quickly share some history uh, concerning the site, briefly. Address some of the criteria set forth in the zoning bylaw. Um, and Lauren, do I have the ability to share my screen?
You do.
Okay, so. Uh, let's see here. There we go. Um. So what you guys uh, see on your screens right now is a house. Uh, that house is actually formerly uh, the house that was on this particular property back in the eighteen hundreds. Uh, my understanding of the history is that uh, and the owner of the property across the street. Came into ownership of this house and in nineteen twenty. Uh, decided he would like a better view and, and knocked it down. Um, the uh, house. Uh, 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 the, then thereafter, a house was constructed on the property in the nineteen seventies. Which uh, is a ranch-style home, which is what is uh, presently. On the property uh, today. The uh. In the early two thousands, plans were approved, uh, presumably probably also approved by your board. Under large home review to reconstruct um, a eight thousand square foot plus home. Uh, having a three-car garage and a pool. And for whatever reason, that home was never constructed. Tom and Sher- uh, Tom and Sherry bought uh. Bought the property, the residence Cohasset for over twenty years. All three kids. Attended the public school system. Tom's going to give the board an understanding as to one of the reasons. Uh, uh, why he, uh, his family has a medical need for. Uh, this concept. Um, according to the zoning bylaw, the planning board is authorized through this process uh, only to take two actions. Uh, the first is to approve a large home review. And the second is to approve a large home review with conditions. Um, pursuant to section five point four C one. The planning board is to consider four uh, criteria. That being the scale of the building in relation to other structure. The preservation of landscape. Lighting and circulation. And our team will address those four items. We believe we have a good project, strong application. And we think it'll be substantial upgrade to the neighborhood compared to the two. Detached buildings and the existing home that is there presently. So. With that, I'm going to ask um, Tom, say a few words and then we'll move it over to uh, Carmen.
All right, thank you, Jeff, and uh, thank you, everyone, and thank you for uh, reviewing our project. Uh. As Jeff said, uh, my wife, Sheri and I, we've lived in Cohasset for quite some time. We've been here almost twenty years at uh, just around the corner from the property at one oh four Jerusalem Road. Uh, we very much enjoy living in Cohasset and uh. Well, we're quite busy with uh, both work and family. I have been active in the community. I was uh, a board member on the Cohasset Education Foundation for a number of years. Specifically, I spent my time fundraising and uh, was quite instrumental in building or rebuilding of the uh. New learning center at the high school a few years ago. Uh, we have three children. Uh, my youngest is Amelia. She's age eleven, typical eleven-year-old uh, involved in lac- uh, lacrosse and dance and things like that. I have a sixteen-year-old son, uh, who is a uh, boy scout. He just became an Eagle Scout and he's now the. Uh, senior patrol leader for troop twenty-eight in Cohasset. Uh, and then my oldest son is uh, twenty, uh, who continues to live with us. Uh, he is a special needs person. He has uh, severe autism. He's an intellectual disability as well as other medical and behavioral. Challenges, all of which require twenty-four-seven supervision. Uh, living in our present place, we're presently uh, quite tight on space, particularly as his needs change. And so we've been looking for a new home for quite some time. And uh, I've been looking at this property for literally over twelve years. Uh, and was finally able to uh, purchase it about a year and a half ago or so. And my goal with it was to build a home that would include all that we've grown to love in this neighborhood, uh, what I call the little harbor area. Uh, as well as our current space, which we do enjoy, but it's just way too small for us. Uh, while also just providing additional space and amenities, uh, particularly to meet the needs of our family, which is growing and active, but also my son. Uh, as he just continues to uh. Evolve in his life, uh, because we would like him to be able to continue to live with us harmoniously with the rest of the family and that, and so that. We're looking for just more space. And so we partnered with uh, Holy Martinez on this project and we've known them for quite some time. Our kids were all quite. And so we partnered with Holy Martinez on this project. We've known them for quite some time. Our kids were all quite small together when we first met them. But also just because of I've watched all the number of beautiful homes that they've built throughout Cohasset and I really wanted to work with them. And kind of my vision for this property was for it to be a coastal design to really capture the natural beauty of Little Harbor and the ocean beyond. With both in and outdoor space. We have an active lifestyle, so we wanted to be supportive of that in the design and the amenities. We wanted to utilize the the natural walkout layout that the property has with with a hilltop. With the downhill to towards the water. But also just being cognizant of what's on the property, I wanted to move away from the water, also move away from both neighbors. On either side, but then effectively consolidate and improve what I would, I'll be kind. And say the current half hazard property. And and turn it into something much more beautiful and what I'm characterizing this home as a casually elegant home.
Alright, great. So Carmen, why don't you share? Carmen, why don't you share with the commission your site plan and so forth?
May I share the screen? Oh, I actually think I able to now. Can everybody see this plan? Can everybody see this plan?
Yes, Carmen, I can see it.
Thank you. Well, good evening. My name is Carmen Hudson from Cavanaro Consulting. I am the engineer for the project and this is the plan that was submitted. For the large home review application. On the left, we have the existing conditions of the property. And on the right, we have the proposed conditions. So I will start with the existing conditions of the property and as. As Jeff mentioned, this is a very large lot. There are. Over fifty eight thousand square feet of upland area up to the seawall. The limit of the the mid high water line is about the seawall. And there's another about fifty eight thousand square feet beyond, which go to the middle water line. So this is quite a large lot. However, it's about half and half. They can only use about half of the lot to, you know, up to the seawall. The existing house is non-conforming to the site setback. And and also there are the the two separate structures, the two separate garages. When you drive into the property and you get close to the house, you have to go down several steps. To actually be able to even get to the first floor. And when you are at the house, you could access the backyard through the house. But over here on both sides of the access to the backyard from the house, there are large retaining walls. Because there is a very severe drop in elevation. As you can see, there are many contours over here on the right of the property going to the pool. There's about an eight foot drop from the pool area at elevation thirty. To the entrance to the rear of the home at elevation twenty-two. So looking at it from Little Harbor, what you see is a tall home with two retaining walls on the sides. For access and then just lawn everywhere. So the, as. Explained, the purpose of this is to try to make it accessible. And this was gained by actually removing all retaining walls. The grade is going to now mimic more of the natural grade. The grade along the side of the house will be lowered. So by the time it reaches the pool, there is no need to use any retaining walls. Because this left side would be slightly, I mean, it would be filled because of saturation twenty-two right now. So everything will be at about elevation twenty-six, about the medium. So bringing it up four feet from twenty-two and down from feet from thirty. Which will eliminate retaining walls altogether. The house will be completely conforming to the zoning requirements. The driveway, as you can see, is a circular driveway, so circulation for vehicular access is satisfied. Under existing proposed conditions. We're eliminating the two detached garages. The purpose of this is to concentrate. The indoor living area to one building. So there is a three car garage that will be attached to the home. Access for the homeowners will be straight from the garage into the house. If they want to reach the backyard, they can do so from the interior of the house. Or they can just walk on the two sides of the lawn. Of the, and there's landscape everywhere and Cara can go through that. And we're also proposing this this green area in the back. Is a very large, it's about forty six hundred square feet worth of native plantings that we're proposing. So right now, everything is long down to the seawall. And we're proposing to remove about half of this lawn and put native plantings there. So when you view the house from Little Harbor, the change will be very dramatic. It will not be a sea of lawn with, you know, dramatic changes in elevation with retaining walls, but it will be. Some lawn leading to this expansive area of native vegetation. And this home and all, everything will be gradual as far as the photography goes. So one thing that I wanted to show everyone as well. Is the houses around the neighborhood. So within three hundred feet of the proposed dwelling. We have number seventy-two, which is to the right, standing on North Main Street to the right of the lockers. And this is a house that is there. Then number seventy-nine is straight across the street from eighty North Main Street. This is eighty North Main Street and eighty North Main Street. It's a one story from the front on the side, but when you go to the back, it's actually very high because of those retaining walls. They're the eight foot retaining walls. This is number ninety, which is to the right of eighty North Main. And this is number ninety-four. So number ninety-four, once again, in the front is much, the the land is much higher than in the back. So in the front, it also looks like a one story home. So as you can see, the the neighborhood is fairly homogeneous with the exception of ninety-four and number eighty. And we also look at the neighborhood. And we just. The lots that we have text on are lots that have similar living areas. Than the proposed living area, as Jeff mentioned, the existing building is about forty-one square feet. Of residential gross floor area. We're proposing ten thousand three hundred square feet of gross floor area. So right next door at number seventy-two, the. And this is information that we gathered online from the assessor's office. So the gross area for number seventy-two, for example, is ten thousand ninety-three square feet. The gross area of number ninety is seven thousand two hundred and eighty-seven. There are several houses around that are about the same gross area as the proposed dwelling. And also something that we considered was the ratio, the intensity of use, let's say. The ratio of gross area to to land. And this is just using the the upland of this lot because upland and, you know, the. The wetland really combined to like almost a hundred and twenty thousand square feet for this lot. But just considering the upland, the intensity of usage for this lot after this work is done will be about eighteen percent. And as you can see, it is also similar to to what the neighborhood is right now. There's almost thirty percent intensity of use here at number ten Beach Street. Once again, there are houses that are in the vicinity of this ten thousand square foot house, one that is spread immediately to the right. Others that are around like ninety-one square feet, nine hundred square feet, sixty-three hundred square feet, seventy-four hundred square feet, twelve thousand square feet. And also just looking across the water from eighty North Main Street. You can see all their large homes such as Ninety Thomas Road with over eighteen thousand square feet or eighty six Beach Street with with over twelve thousand square feet. Or sixty-three Nichols Road with over fifteen thousand square feet. So we just wanted to to show you what the neighborhood looks like and just go over the plan that is in front of you. And now I will. Call on Susan to do a presentation on the architectural design.
Thank you, Carmen. The first, the first page I'd like to put up is the first page of the set. Very good. My name's Susan Holdley. I'm with Holy Martinez Architects. And pleased to be here to present eighty North Main Street. We, as everyone knows. Let's see, why don't we start out with the roof plan? Oh no, let's, let's go to that one. So as Carmen began to describe the difference between what we are facing with existing conditions and what we're proposing. There's sort of two themes. One is that we're consolidating and we're conforming. We're consolidating these, these three. Detached buildings right now into into one. And what we are doing is effectively removing the prominence. Of the new modular garage that was placed on the site right here in the last few years. Which has gone up that, when that's removed, the whole sense of the site from North Main Street will be much, much diminished. When you consider both the landscape interventions that Skyline is proposing and what. And how they work with what we're proposing, we hope you agree. As as we described, or as Carmen described before, the present, the present site, even though the building is smaller than what we're proposing. It requires a lot of very, almost, I would say, almost brutal retaining walls. That are disjointed and have sort of evolved over time to accommodate. Evolving uses and desires and what we're trying to do is to pull this together into a project that. Also addresses the challenge of providing spaces that the family requires in the adjacencies that they require. To go to the first floor plan. Okay, so the project begins on on the first floor. And just as is true with the ranch arrangement right now, one enters on grade from the first level. But then goes down to a first level where most of the family's recreational requirements are held. It also creates spaces that join the outdoor pool, which is on the water side. The gray area in this first floor plan represents the area where we are entitled to count. Floor area at fifty percent. So that's, that's what that shaded area shows. Again, this is the first level with a walkout to an outdoor pool. Great diminishment of retaining walls and so forth. And I'd like you to remember that area when we get to that rear elevation. Because we've been careful to provide this in order to really diminish. The visual effects that you'll have from inner harbor. Again, our job was to fit it into the site with minimal visual. And other impacts to what was around it and how the 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 house is perceived both on Little Harbor and from Main Street. Let's go to the first floor plan, which is the main level plan. If you'll recall, the relationship of the living spaces to the garage. Are such that when one enters the site, you are also brought up to the first. The the main level and into a utility. A utility entry this way and also you have access to the garage. Typical office, kitchen, family room and guest suite is contained on this floor. And then when you go up to the set, the next floor up. You get, you get the bedrooms and a couple of modest walkout spaces, the master suite. And then notably over the garage, we have the special needs therapy area. And Tommy's room. Which gives a nice sort of associated suite of rooms for for the family to. Continue to grow and evolve. Here's the roof plan. The idea is that the the home is. As broken up as possible to create sort of this staggered mass that doesn't appear, doesn't appear massive. So here's the flirt first elevation that I'll show. It's the one that you see when you come right off of eighty means eighty Main Street. We're considering circulation and large home review tonight. So I will note that the the entry to the site is similar to what is there now, so no change. We're proposing a sort of a centrally oriented. Composition, again, that's broken up using a contemporary coastal vocabulary, which is found in. Many homes around in the region and takes a conservative stylistic approach to. To how to build. Next. The next illustration is what you will see from the neighbors, I'll say to the right. As you'll notice, the, we've broken the house up to be, literally, it's a, it's a house that's. One room deep. It's not a massive house and that was to keep the height down. When we do that, we're pretty pleased with the result that what you get on the neighbor's side. Is a very modest. Engable with all of the other elevations that you see receding into the background. Next slide. Now, this is the back elevation, which I have to qualify visually. Probably looks graphically bigger than it will appear on the site. The may, there is a very significant defining line here for decks and everything below it. Is actually. Will probably be painted either a darker color or something meant to recede. And then the rest of the elevation where all the windows out to, out to the harbor are. Is meant to diminish the amount of glass that's desirable from the client's point of view. But also tries to break it up so it doesn't look like something that is out of scale with what's around it. Finally. Finally, this is the, this is the elevation to the neighbors, I'll say to the left. This elevation shows. A very quiet approach to a. House that is nearby, but it is now conforming where right now it is non-conforming. And as you will notice, we have been very, very conservative with our application of lights. Our lights are all dark sky compliant fixtures and they've been put. To absolutely not only minimize. The the appearance of the overall building when all the lights are on, but also. To always be pointed down and to absolutely minimize light escape into adjoining properties. The materials that we're proposing are commonplace, regionally appropriate materials that. That are, it's a very everyday vocabulary of materials. We are looking at white shingles, a dark roof that's made of Tesla or similar solar tiles. We are looking at. Probably some natural wood on the, on the. Garage doors, which will probably be very similar to the garage doors on other projects that we've done with the same, with the same vendor. Who is Brad Cohen did the Sailing Club doors and the doors at Twenty Joy Place. So if you'd like to go see a real life sample of what those will look like, you can do that there. We're also proposing, and then before I hand it over to Cara Lamb. what I'd like to mention is that um, I'm really proud of the way that we were able to really integrate the building along with the landscape. The landscape architect and the architect look worked very hand in glove uh, to get all of the entries and circulations around this building just right, so that it'll nestle into the site as much as it can. And one of those things that we did was to select, um, if you'll see that the uh, foundation material is Weymouth granite, which is our, our regional stone. We would specify that to uh recur in the um, in the landscape plan as well as forming the basis of the rest of the building, so that when you look out at the ledge crop that's out in Little Harbor, um, it will appear that the landscape and the foundation of this building were literally quarried from the site, which is something that's meaningful to all of us. So um, let's see, with that, I will turn it over to Kara.
Uh, Kara, before you go, just one question for Susan. Susan, uh, the existing uh finished floor area of the existing dwelling is listed by the tax assessor as forty-one hundred and fifty square feet, there about. Is that, does that include the uh, the space of the detached buildings, or does it exclude that space? And uh, it, it includes or excludes?
I think it includes, because there's a, a, a room above uh, the new garage.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, Kara?
Thanks, Jeff. Um, I'm going to share my screen. So my name is Kara. Um, I'm a landscape architect with Skyline Landscapes. And screen share. And before I get into the materials uh, that Susan was mentioning, I just wanted to go over the site. A little um overview of the site itself. Um, I know there was a lot of questions in the Q and A that came up regarding um what would be removed and the vegetation and how the site, the, the uh, the new home would be viewed from the street. And I just wanted to go over that before I got into the nitty gritty. Um, so this is eighty North Main, um, right here. This is that roundabout that you uh, have seen in um uh Carmen's site plans. I just wanted to go into this, this drive here. As you, as one drives down North Main Street, um, once, one is confronted with this uh very large span of vegetation that surrounds the property. Um, it hugs the side here. This is the property line and also on this side of the property line. And I just wanted to emphasize that um, this vegetation is actually going to remain on the site and it will not actually be removed. So this is the existing vegetation as seen from inside the parking lot. Um, trying to get two views going at the same time. Um, as you can see, when you drive into the parking lot, um, it is pretty much very well uh shielded from the street. Um, this is, I think, the house that's across the street. This is a view in winter. So all of the leaves on the trees are um, missing here. But all of this vegetation that you see around the perimeter of the lot will actually remain. And so just wanted to put that out there in case there were any um, questions about that. So all of this will be, will be existing and will remain. Um, and so we're really focused on the interior of the site. Um, what is getting demolished is the home itself and the vegetation that's directly uh hugging the building. Um, and that with that being said, I wanted to go into the materials that Susan had mentioned. In terms of the materials, um, Susan just mentioned that we would be using Weymouth granite. Um, so I just wanted to show you what that looks like. Um, this is a stone quarry of uh Weymouth granite. It has this really beautiful um, iron patina. It's with gray and tans, uh, really blends in to what you see when you look out at um Little Harbor. Um, so this was the um, the inspiration, if you will, to the, this cladding that might, might go up around the home. In terms of the paving, we chose a very benign color. You know, this is just a very beautiful gray uh granite uh with, and these blocks are meant to just mimic some of the cobbles that might be used on, on the uh, the rumble strip. Um, and then also boulders. Uh, so we kept it very basic, very simple. Um, and then in terms of the site itself, I was um, really thinking of uh Tommy here, um, his oldest son. Um, and we were thinking about wayfinding strategies for Tommy, um, as he, you know, navigated the site. And we wanted to keep it um, user friendly and um, beautiful at the same time. So we chose to go with this beautiful like boulder aesthetic, um, having it embedded into the grass at points just to give wayfinding. And then in terms of lighting, um, all the lights that were chosen are dark sky compliant. Um, and I just want to show my lens, my lighting plan just to show you what this looks like. So this is a computer simulation done by our lands, um, our landscape um, lighting designer. She put together um, what the dark sky lights would look like on different materials. And so this would be like a standard Ballard light, just as an example. Um, this is over asphalt paving. Uh, this is over gravel or stone, and this is over concrete. And when it's over concrete, which is like a usually like a whitish material, it would be much lighter. But we are not using uh, concrete in this instance. We would be using natural stone and asphalt. Um, so as you can see, the lighting is actually very dim on the site. The lighting designer was actually uh worried that there was, would not be enough lighting. Um, but I told her uh, we would like to minimize that. So that was really um, you know, put under consideration. Um, does anyone have any questions for me thus far?
Uh, let's just keep moving this along, please. It's already been over a half hours.
Great, okay. Um, I will, I can skip over um, the plants that we've selected, just, just give you a visual. Um, plants I chose were to give four seasons of interest in color. Um, so spring, winter, fall, and summer. Um, and then in terms of the landscape, um, I just wanted to show what this home would look like uh with, this is just a three dimensional model that I created. And I wanted to, this is just a model showing the front of the house. Um, and this is the side. These are side views. So as you can see, much of the home is very much um, shielded from the street. And then this would be the native meadow that is on the slope. In terms of the landscape plan. Um, let's see. So as I, as I mentioned before, it's really only the center of the lot that really is um, designed. Um, and then we have, as we enter this new driveway, we have a turnaround for deliveries. There would be a gated entry. Um, it would be in, there would be an oval uh, roundabout driveway. And then the, there would be several planting islands that would be fully planted with the plants that I just showed you. Um, all of the plants that are um in the one hundred to fifty foot coastal buffer zone are native plants. Um, and we are looking to restore the slope that goes down to the water as a native meadow. Just wanted, so if I, I cut that short, um, Tom, uh, if, if you've had any other questions. Um, and then in terms of the vegetation to be removed on the, the meadow. Um, currently, we have this lawn. I'm showing you both winter and summer. Uh, this is what it currently looks like. There is a large, vast lawn uh with this uh, non-native uh willow shrub. It's um, it's not, it, it, I would say that some would love it and some dislike it. Um, it turns a bright pink in the summer. Um, and it's definitely not a native plant. It does take over. Uh, my, my uh goal was to remove it and replace it with um, a beautiful rolling meadow. And um, I tried to keep that short. Tom, if you have any other questions, um, please let me know.
Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, that, that concludes, that concludes our presentation.
All right, thank you, Jeff. All right, members of the board, let's try to keep it brief, but uh, Clark, I'll start with you.
Yeah, um, you know, I, when I, when I originally looked at this package before the presentation, um, I, I was, I was looking for something not to like about it. Uh, but then when I, when I got to the scale of the, the buildings, one of our criteria, um, I noticed that the architect did do a reasonable job at um, breaking up the scale, even though it's a, a relatively large uh, a large, uh, large home. Um, with a variety of high quality materials um, and um a, a reasonable uh color palette. The, the circulation, uh, the other criteria doesn't seem to be significantly different than, than what's existing. The other criteria that I bring up, screening is already screening in there for the, for the neighbors and, and the lighting uh, seems to be attended to. Uh, it, it, it appears that at least on the northwest side, the um, the, the building construction has been moved away from the property line. Um, so I, I, and, and the, on the, on the easterly side, the, it is quite a narrow massing element um, uh with that, uh direct to butter, the um, so I, I, I wanted not to like it, but I, I, I feel like the, the, the team has done a, a reasonably good job at um, uh, dealing with the criteria of the large home review. Um, so that's, that's all I wanted to say about that.
Okay. I'll skip myself for the moment in the orders, or Amy can go anything?
Um. I think it's been a thorough presentation. It gives us um, a lot to understand about what the clients are attempting to achieve. Um, I think it's uh laudable to integrate uh co- complexity in one's life and do it in a way that's very humane and also loving. I think that's very nice. Um, I would say that the, that the, my, my feelings are the following. That while the houses that are, that are surrounding the proposed development um, are of, of a size range, um, this house is significantly uh, large by the standards that we usually see. And I think that uh, from the comments that we've gotten regarding uh neighbors, um, one of the concerns is the extent to which the structure appears to be and will feel very large. And so one of the ways to solve the problem of that uh, s- sense of uncertainty is to actually create a three dimensional model, which we don't have right now. And as a result, we can't really get the full effect of what the change is going to be. Um, I drove to the property today and, and I didn't get out and walk because I don't have permission to do that. But I did see that the house is laid down below and you can bear barely see the house as it is right now. And so uh, recognizing that the property does have this downward slope, having the structure placed on top of it as it would sit, would probably provide um, a lot of information in terms of what the impact will be on people around the applicant's uh home. So I would ask that there be um, um, a, a layer of uh further analysis so that the, the sense of magnitude is proportional to what is uh around the, the house that's being proposed.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Yes, um, thank you for the presentation. I think it was very thorough and a good introduction to what um uh, is uh intended here, and I think the intent is, is good and understandable. And I think a lot of the elements that are provided um, with this um, will um make it um, fitting for the environment, for the specific lot, for the neighborhood, for that part of town. Uh, one thing that struck me that I'll just comment on is um with regard to the plans as they were shown, and again, they're just plans. So I think this piggybacks onto what was just said um, with regard to, I think there would be some helpful it to have additional detail provided with, by a model or a site visit, or whatever it is to get a sense of both the scale of the parcel we're dealing with and what you intend to put on it. But what uh was struck me was when some of the rendering showed the um garage area, the three car garage, the three bays, and then the sizable space above it in the roof line of that part of the building. It looked like it was similar, if not equivalent, to the roof line of the rest of the house. And it just struck me as not exactly fitting one with the other. You know, it almost looked like a um garage in need of a house. Um, as opposed to a garage complimenting a house. The way it was shown and maybe with the intent. Um, so I just put that out there as, as something to consider. And I think that would be a cause um uh, you know, for concern or of interest with the butters that would be looking at that, especially during a time of leaves off. I think your landscape architect talked about plantings being native and um put forth the, the correct view that this is how they would look when leaves are, are going to be off. But you know, you're still going to see even when leaves are off, the thorough amount of plantings, some amount of, of structure through whatever you're looking at. And if, you know, any of these views come through as they're currently shown with, with regard to the size of the garage and the house next to it, I think there could be some cause for concern and I'll leave that out. Um, how you would perhaps mitigate that. But one thing that did strike me is perhaps some of the details with regard to the roof on the main home. Um, it didn't appear to me that there was as much detail on where the garage structure was. But um, you know, that can be uh, provided additional detail later on, or if it's not there, something to consider. That's all.
Thank you, Kevin. Deirdre?
Just had two things. One, I echo Amy's uh request for maybe a three D uh image. Um, I'm very concerned about the size of the house from the water. Um, you already have a Jerusalem road from the water. If you're a water person and you're in a boat, we look like parts of California and the California coast now, one massive place after another with very little land in between. I know we're dealing with the real coast and the rock ledge and the granite out there. Um, so I think it would be helpful to have some sense of, of a real three D picture for some of us and some of the people and the neighbors to see how this is going to work. I do compliment the um presentation. It was very well done. I just have, maybe I missed it. I know that the existing uh greenery and uh is all sitting um, on the road right now. Am I missing that in the plans, the landscape plans? I don't see the existing persiphia and all that uh, greenery uh, on the plans. But maybe I am missing where that is. I know it's staying so that the property will still be surrounded by those existing plants. And then the only other question is, uh, the uh landscaping plans are lovely. Are we planting full sized trees and bushes? Are these going to be small things that have to grow into the house? Those are my questions. Otherwise, very well done presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Deirdre. Chris? Uh, Kara, Kara, we're just going to go through our comments and the butter comments. I don't suspect we're closing the hearing, so you'll be able to answer these questions later.
The only, the only additional question that I have, and I apologize if I missed it in the presentation, was about the easement in the backyard. Uh, if you could clarify the purpose of the easement.
Jeff, do you want to take that quick?
Yeah, uh, it is an easement to allow a pipe, uh, a electrical wire and a well. So the easement is
Uh, a electrical wire and a well, so the easement is to um. Is is to is to have a well and and for the benefit of the property to the right.
So it's it's a well serving the neighbor's house?
Yes.
It it serves both houses. We share it. The wells on our property, but they have an easement to use it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chris. My comments are twofold. One is the the wider policy issues for the town, I think. This is showing us once again how. Our height definition for a slope group is so out of whack. Um, and specifically with respect to height for this project, I. I believe we had been beginning to implement a change in how we calculate height by at least by policy, and I'd like to see. What these height calculations would be under that policy and essentially rather than taking one mean at the bottom of the property, we are. Doing measurements at. Various points around the perimeter. Because this looks a lot higher than it seems to be on paper. Uh, the second thing is, you know, the border policy thing is, you know, there's a lot of people concerned about the size of houses in their town. It's something that the zoning working group was talking about, although we haven't discussed any specific proposal, but. You know, I know the limits of the large home review, and this is just pointing out its limitations and its shortfalls um. That this can't be effectively regulated. Like Clark, I did find something unlike. I do think this house is completely out of scale with its neighbors. And to use big houses a little further away on gammons and beach, I think is, you know, just an unfair comparison. Uh, everything around it seems to be in the six, seven thousand square foot range, and I'd like to, you know. With windy hill a year and a half ago, our initial decision for proposals that were half the size of this house was to. Set a condition limiting the uh size uh on the on the grounds of it being out of scale under the criteria in the bylaw. Uh, we, my my recollection is we didn't have a strong objection from our town council at the time and doing that. Carolyn, I'll ask you perhaps to formally give us your thoughts about that. Uh, about what what's the limits of our power under C one A? Because uh thi- this house is more than doubling in size, it's. It's uh rough figures, you know, three, four thousand square feet bigger than its neighbors, and I have a real problem with that. I appreciate, you know, when I saw the application, I didn't know the personal story behind s- some of the motivation, but. You know, unfortunately, I have to be the Grinch here that that's not a legal criteria for us to consider and uh. You know, the these criteria that we added in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, they have to mean something. So perhaps Carolyn, you could enlighten us about that and. I would ask the applicant to consider scaling this back to being more in scale with your neighbors. Your immediate neighbors, not neighbors half mile away across the other side of Little Harbor. Um, so that that those are my thoughts. Um, now as far as a butters. I'm sorry?
Would you like me to address that right now?
Well, let me let me just, you you let me give you a moment. Let's see about butters if we have anything, and then we can get to a discussion of that. I know that Mr. VanderWilde had submitted some written comments. I didn't see it on our website and maybe perhaps it should be. Um, Lauren, I don't know if you're in a position to summarize what his comments were. Um, since he wasn't able to be here tonight, but he did submit some written comments. And then with respect to Mr. Clemens and Fiori's comments that we have in the Q and A. Uh, a lot of that seems to be uh directed towards the. More shorter term construction impacts, but if either one of you gentlemen wants to be speak to this directly, uh, let it let us know now. Lauren, I don't know, can you summarize uh? Mr. VanderWilde's comments or or should, but let's make sure they're up on the website.
Truthfully, Tom, it's been a while and I've gotten a lot of information. I wouldn't feel comfortable paraphrasing at this point, but I can distribute it to the applicant, make sure that they have received it. And put it on the website for public.
Right, great. No, I appreciate that. All right, uh, then um, uh, Mr. Hensy, I'll 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 give you an opportunity to respond. To my comments or the board's comments.
Uh, well, I I appreciate that and I uh. I recognize the home is getting much larger than what is already there, but I think the home that is there. Is what is completely out of context with the neighborhood, both facing North Main Street and uh Little Harbor. To get to the house, you need to go down steps to get to it. It's almost unlivable for anyone unless they're very active and able. Uh, when I look at the size of it, I look at the. The data that Carmen referenced that comes from the assessor's office and looking at the square footage of the homes around us. Uh, many of which are much taller than what this is. Uh, measured from where their ground is, they're three stories hu- tall uh up into their attic. This is our basement. Part of this is our basement. It's a walkout la- uh piece of land, a natural walkout piece of land, of which there are many of those all around Little Harbor that have a natural walkout like this. This property has, uh, and so that's why we are utilizing it. If we were to move the house back away from the water even further and not utilize the walkout. The square footage would drop tremendously. And probably be smaller than some of the homes around.
Well, you know, and 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 perhaps Concom may have something to say about that issue, you know, where it's going to be situated, but um. I I I I, you know, again, you're not, well, just right, but you know, I'm using this as an example of some wider policy issues, and I apologize for that, but. You know, this this is this is going to become an example of discussions going forward about. Whether we need to do something in the zoning bylaw about our definition of height and calculations of height and the size of houses. And you know, and I don't think a smaller house than the neighbors is something that people are concerned about, but people come to these meetings. At different parts of town and they tell us that these houses that are larger in scale than their neighbors, those are the problem. I'm just point pointing it out that that's, you know, and I I I do think this is, you know, you're you're. What, a quarter or a third larger than anything, any of your neighbors, and that's substantial.
But but it it is not, um, so the the house to the right, number seventy two, is over ten thousand square feet. In gross area, the one on the left is over seven thousand square feet, and the one across the street is over twelve thousand square feet.
And the one across the street is a multifamily, which which I will tell you that. Other applicants tried to use multifamily structures to compare it to their scale as well, and I. I rejected that then and I'll reject that now as a comparison. But I hear what you're saying, I I I again.
I drive out of my driveway and that's what.
I I appreciate. I appreciate the limitations of of this. Or as it's written, it's just, it's the border policy issue is pointing out an issue. Amy, I saw your hand up first.
Yeah, I just want to I to ask if uh in the construction of the new proposed uh residence, will there be? Granite removed in order to fu- further modify the subfloor area so that you can. Place the items that you're interested in having there?
Uh, we don't believe there's any granite uh on the property.
And this is one of those uh very peculiar places in Cohasset that actually doesn't have exposed ledge.
Well, exposed ledge is one thing, but ledge underneath, you have to find it. If it's not, you know, it might, it's not that it has to be visible, it's more a question of. Is there granite that you're going to need to be dealing with when you put in the the basement space you're talking about?
Even if there were, though, that is an exemption from the lead removal by law.
I I'm just asking the question. One of the questions that the residents around you raised was about construction noise, and. As we know from all over town, the removal of of ledge is unfortunately not done. Frequently enough with explosives, it's done with chipping, and it can literally destroy someone's uh life for about. Seven months to to put in a full foundation.
I don't think anybody could answer that, but just by looking at the exterior of the lie, there's no exposed ledge. That's about all we can answer.
I think the uh the the one thing, uh, there's also, uh, there may be some. Uh, remaining foundation from the original mansion that was on the property.
Okay.
So, um, if if I might uh respond to a few of the comments.
Let me let me hear from Mr. Brewer first, Jeff.
Yeah, so I mean, the the main purpose of our our large home review is is to um. With is the the objective of making the proposed plan harmonious with and non harmful. Injurious or objectionable to existing uses in the area. That's that's the main um. Criteria that existed before we did a breakdown of criteria, which has to do with the scale of the buildings. Uh, details, buffers, um, the preservation of landscape lighting and circulation, which are. More minor minor aspects of a large home review. Obviously, the the scale of the building is the. The the more significant one, um, where large home review can only either um. Um, approve or approve with conditions. Um, I'm 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 not sure what kinds of conditions we might. Uh, we might make that um, we think as a board would make the. Proposed plan more harmonious, um, but uh that that is a that is a option for the board.
Well, that's what that's.
Whether we like the height or we think there's a zoning issue, or this is going to be the poster child of. Of uh zoning changes in the future. I don't think that that.
I I I under- I understand that and I understand we can't say no. Uh, but that's why, you know, since we we. We started down the path of conditioning based on scale a year and a half ago with the advice of a different council, I would like to get Carolyn's opinion on. You know, for as long as we have this large home review in its present form, and as we continue to see houses. A very massive size proposed, I think we need to uh understand where our limitations are. Going forward and happens to be the project at the moment that's bringing that question to the forefront. But you know, I certainly understand our limitations and what we can and cannot do at the moment, uh, so we can't say no to this, but. I, you know, the 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 idea of this too is to have this question that hopefully, you know, you you. You engender a discussion with neighbors, and by the way, I think Mr. Clemens, in one of his comments, Mr. Hensy asked if he could. Speak to you at some time, or the neighbors could speak to you. I hope you'll reach out to them. We can't compel you to do that, but I reach out to your neighbors.
Yeah, I I've been in touch with uh the Vanderwiles. We know them previously.
Yeah, I I mean, I I never did. Yeah, if you have the the Mr. Clemens, I'm not sure what his address is uh here, but uh. Uh, you know, I I would just see as best as you can reach out to people and as much as you can, because that's one of the purposes of this, is to try to get everybody on the same page. On something that works for everybody. All right, Jeff, I'll 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 give you the last comment and then we'll see what the board's pressures to go forward.
Okay, great. So I have a comment on various of the items that were discussed. Um. First, when we, as a team, as development team, when we conceive of a project, the first thing that we do. Is look at the existing regulations, because the goal is to create a project that conforms to the existing regulations. And that will be approvable. Um, and so from a policy perspective, understanding that there apparently is some discussion within the town. Of potential zoning changes, uh, I just wanted to remind the board. That what we're dealing with now are this is the zoning that's presently in effect, the zoning that's presently in effect. Has a definition of height, that definition is uh taken from the um average of the preconstruction grade. Around the proposed building at points ten feet from the foundation. The uh uh the the zoning bylaw. Uh, says you either approve or you approve with conditions, and that that's an important point because. To uh consider a condition. That says, I know you proposed the project that is ten thousand square feet of a home. But I'm going to now condition it such that it is eight thousand square feet. Um, that essentially uh is a denial in my estimation, and. We have zoning bylaws, and I am curious as to Carolyn's um opinion on this. Is the zoning bylaw sets forth criteria, it sets forth setbacks, it set forth um. Um, uh, uh, height, and uh it sets forth density. Uh, we have, we have a lot that's more than three times the size of the other lots uh of of required lots in the area. So of course, we're going to have a larger home on it, and the issue with um. You know, taking the zoning bylaw, the dimensional criteria that is written in the zoning bylaw. And then saying that, you know, the proposal, even though it conforms with all those requirements. Is still objectionable because it's too large, I think is illegal, and I um I do think that Carolyn should look at that. Um, I wanted to point out to the board that there is a fence along the left or the left sideline. Um, which obviously has a a function of of uh screening. There uh, there is uh a a a dramatic, relatively dramatic. Uh, uh, changing grade on not only towards the water, but also towards the left sideline. Such that the the home to the left is set up. Um, and so when you you move the house further from the property and eliminate a nonconformity altogether. Uh, you have a fence, you have vegetation, uh, and you have a grade change, and then we have a definition of height, which we're working with. And actually staying modestly below. Um, to 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 me, those are, you know, the the collectively. That is in in answer to some of the issues of mitigation on screening and so forth. I think one of the members of the board. Uh, mentioned that, well, we're, you're still going to see the structure. Well, of course, you're going to see the structure. To hold any property owner to the standard of. You can't see it um is a is a is uh unreasonable. Um, as far as uh. You know, I I think that there was a question concerning a three D model. Um, the application contains a three D model. Uh, lo- um, Cara, Cara's plans uh have a three D model, and she walked through it on the presentation. In my experience, three D models are not uh necessarily indicative of. Uh, a- anything other than a three theoretical nature. Um, I I what I don't want is to provide a three D model that is theoretical. And then uh be held to account to construct a building that maintains that three D model character. Because it's it's a flawed process. Um, and it's impossible to match it, so I think that it would actually be misleading. To uh to pro- to to prove provide additional data in the context of a residential home. Uh, in addition to the three D model we have, and I do note that yours that your bylaw does not require. Uh, it requires very detailed submissions, does not require a three D model, just requires a model, and we've provided that. So those are my comments. I don't know, Cara, if you had any comments on some of the questions regarding the landscaping, but.
No, I I'm not going to entertain more about the landscaping right now, so. Um, and Jeff, let me assure you, nobody's going to make an illegal decision here. Um, we're we're permitted to vent about the shortcomings of this bylaw. And by the way, C two does allow the planning board some leeway in supplementing what it requests as part of its review. Okay, I'm going to give you a last word here. By the way, Mr. Hensy, uh, Mr. Clemens said he's at ninety one. Uh, North Main Street.
So I just want to make sure that with the letter that we received from um. Mr. VanderWille, let it be read into the record, so I have it up, and I'd like to do that. Is that all right, Tom? I'll read it quickly. Okay, these comments are offered in the spirit of constructive engagement. I look forward to being neighbors with the applicants. Number one, garage, proposed project. Would remove the existing freestanding garage located to the south of the existing dwelling. This will benefit the neighborhood. The garage is out of character. Number two. Height enassing, the proposed dwelling is approximately forty five feet tall when measured from grade. Uh, elevation twenty six feet to the high roof on the northeast. Elevation eight two zero two, elevation number one, this will visually impact our yard, especially the parts of our yard near Little Harbor. The proposed dwelling is approximately hundred and ten feet long along its northwest, southeast axis and an additional hundred and fifteen feet long. On its northeast, southwest axis. Yes, drawing eight one zero three, these dimensions, max height and total length are larger than any of the dwellings in the neighborhood. My dwelling is approximately thirty one feet from grade to top of high roof and eighty feet long on axis. The new structure will be white. Combination of size, height and color will make the new structure very visible from my yard and and dwelling. I ask that you work with the applicants on ways to reduce the visual impact on the proposed structure on his dwelling and yard. Screening based on drawing L four dot one or dot zero, the application proposes maintaining the existing vegetative screen between our dwellings. This is supported. I ask that you consider requesting additional supplemental screen. This is supported. I ask that you consider requesting additional supplemental screening between the proposed dwelling and. Uh, the neighborhood, neighbor's yard extending along our common border from Little Harbor. From the fifty-foot upper line to the street, ideally evergreen and tall enough in maturity, thirty feet tall. To reduce the visual impact of the net new structures on my yard and dwelling, including my second and third floors, which have three bedrooms facing the new structure. Note that drawing L four dots zero indicates that no new trees will be added along our common property line. The elevations included in landscape material presentation, bird's eye view, looking northwest from Main Street. Depict three or four new deciduous trees along the common properly line, North Main Street side thereof. It proposed these trees will be welcomed screening and we would ask proponents to consider extending the screening. Line towards Little Harbor to the fifty-foot buffer line and incorporating tall evergreen trees as described above. Lighting the applicant, application applicants propose dark light uh, sky compliant lighting, which is supported. The driveway lighting light pattern reflects from the driveway surface will visit, will be visible from three bedrooms on the site. On the second and third floors of my dwelling as the existing screening between the dwellings is either deciduous or less than the height required to create a visual barrier. I ask that the consideration be given to reducing the quantity of driveway lights and to add screening between my dwelling and the proposed driveway. Ideally, evergreen trees that are thirty feet tall with maturity. Construction, I would appreciate if the applicants would work with their contractor to limit noise generating construction activities, people noise. Excavation, air compressors, nail guns, et cetera, weekdays seven AM to four PM for the months of May through October, when my family is likely to use our yard. Thank you for your consideration of my comments. Um, Alex Vanderwell. I will make one final comment, which is that the state regulation regarding hours of work are seven AM to seven PM. Uh, and um, that can be modified, but it is, it is, that's the state regulation.
Okay, thank you. All right, what's the board's pleasure? How do you wish to proceed? I think we have a few requests. That should be considered. So. Lauren, I don't know, is September seventh gonna be available for this?
Um, I believe so. What you have on September seventh thus far is a, well, it will be a busy night, but I still think you can do it. It's a continuation of fifty-five South Main Street. It is a continuation of ninety-four Black Horse Lane Common Driveway, continuation of the site planner view for Beechwood General Store. And forty-six Border Street, as you heard earlier. I do think that Beechwood and Border Street.
Yeah, the first two are gonna be quite long, so. When's our next meeting? The twenty-first?
September twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth. Jeff, will you agree to a continuance to the twenty-eighth?
I'm not sure because I, I don't, I don't foresee that we're gonna be um, revising our house plan. Uh, I don't, um, I don't foresee we're gonna be revising our lighting plan. We believe that it meets the objectives. I, 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 I think that there were some inaccuracies in, in um, some of the presuppositions in Mr. Vanderwile's letter, but. Um, you know, we already talked about height. Uh, I, I think that. We would like this board to vote on this application.
Given no choice, it's just they're not gonna agree to a continuance or giving no choice, anybody?
I, 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 I think it's fair to agree to a continuance, but I'm not sure. What you're asking us to do in the interim period of time.
So I, um, Mr. Dootley, I disagree with you.
Well, I'll summarize, yeah, Amy, I, I mean, the three D, the three D model, while you don't think it's valuable, I think. Some of us think it is valuable to do and would be valuable to the neighbors. There are neighbors who, uh, you know, I know they've spoken to the Vanderwiles, but there's other neighbors who've reached out who would like to have an opportunity to speak with your client. Uh, screening by one of those neighbors, Mr. Vanderwell has just been, additional screening has been asked for. Um, and again, you can. Riddle reject this. I, I would like to see height calculated with more measurement points, uh, because, you know. But, you know, I understand what our height definition says. It's totally ridiculous, but it is what it is. I can't change that. But. You know, th- this is supposed to be a, a given, you know, the process in its greatest sense.
I didn't say I wasn't gonna continue. I, I would agree to a continuance.
And I apologize, it's the twenty-eighth, but. The, the project in the village. The project of Black Horse Lane are both gonna be long, just longer discussions than we might wanna think.
Though, though, that's gonna be quite a night, no doubt.
And I don't want you caught up in that, but uh, you know, perhaps make you first, but still, I think. You can see that this still might generate some discussions, so. If you'll agree to that, we'll, we'll put you, you know, we'll tee you up first for the twenty-eighth.
Fair enough.
All right. Sorry, can I have a motion then to that effect? Susan Martin.
Hi, very quick. Yeah, um, if, if there are, I would just like to request that if there are um. Uh, the stipulations that we do with 3D model, there's many, many types of 3D models available in the marketplace now. If you could be specific about what it is that you would require, I can uh. Send that, I, we can write up a proposal to do that.
So my, my view is that the solid block type. Three D model situated in a. Kind of landscape that is similar to where the structure is going to be located. Is the only true way to be able to see what the impact will be. And I mean, you can use Legos and do the same thing, right? The point is, you've got somebody on one side who feels pretty strongly about the fact that there are mo- modifications that would. Clearly improve the, the experience for them regarding the, the structure. Now, if it's a big impediment to the beauty of the house as you see it. Then the question is, can you present to somebody some way of seeing what the situation will be when they do see the built structure? Such that they feel all right. And I think that question is being asked of us with comments in the. In the um, Q and A from several people, there's at least five comments now, I think. From people, seven comments of people around the house. And so I, I think the applicant absolutely wants to make people feel. Comfortable and also wants to be happy in that neighborhood. So then it, this, the question is find a solution for that outcome.
Well, um, so uh, so what a rabbit model with um, alumion or one of those other. Enhancement programs be what you'd be looking for in still form? Do you want a BIM model? Um, I just wanna give you exactly what you'd like to see.
So the way that I find you can truly understand is it has to have physical form. It, the three D, it has to be a physical, right?
Um, right.
Can we look at a sketchup? Three D?
We have a rabbit model now, which is better than a sketchup model. Um, so, but, so I guess to. Rejoined her to that question is, is rabbit with um, with. Uh. Enhancement software run over it, what you're looking for, or do you want something that is uh, like a, like a presentation? Um, level. Shot that will show materials and things like that, because that, there, there's, there, there are vast, one's two thousand dollars and one's ten.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't, it's not the materials as much as the scale relative to the neighbors. That's what they, that's what the neighbor is concerned about, so.
So the rabbit model, what, which we have, thank you.
All right. Clark, can you give us a motion to continue to the twenty-eighth at six thirty?
Got a question?
I'm sorry?
Yes, I have a question. Um, so I, when I did my presentation, I did show a 3D model with the vegetation.
You did.
Yeah, I'm very confused.
We saw it.
I'm just confused as to why that doesn't count. Because I have studied the site in high detail. I crawled around the site in my 3D model.
Is it, is it, is it showing sufficient in, wh- what the neighbors are seeing?
Yes, yes, it shows, it shows a three sixty view of the house. And then in terms of the height regulations with the trees, um, there was a question about. What trees were selected, all the, any new tree that would be. Uh, planted on site would be a very large tree. It would grow relatively quickly. Um, all of these were put under high amount of consideration. If you would like, I can show the model again.
Susan, Susan, last word, Susan, please.
Yes, to that, I would say that uh, the, the model that uh, Cara's office uh. Worked up with us is actually a very, probably the most. Accurate way to get the sense of the building on the site, more so than just seeing. Our rabbit model, which is an enhancement of a sketchup model that Ms. Hobson was referring to. Um, so um, I, I, I would like to reflect uh, Cara's.
Well, perhaps, perhaps the solution is that you. Get together with your neighbors and show it to them. Cause obviously they haven't seen it and they don't feel comfortable enough yet and they're the ones making the point, so.
But, but it is posted on your, it's posted on your website, is it not? So it's part of the landscape drawing set. It's, it's called a 3D model plan, like on the bottom title block, so. Uh, it's there.
It, it sounds like your neighbors would appreciate the opportunity to review it with you. We can't compel you to do that, but I think that would be a good idea.
Well, that is, uh, it's just that. We, we really are going to come back on the twenty eighth with the same material pretty much that you're seeing right now. And there's only one neighbor that was concerned, the one that is over ten thousand square feet in, in.
No, we have seven people that have written comments and.
Stop, stop, stop. All right, we're agreeing to continue this to the twenty eighth. Can I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Clark?
Aye.
Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glass, I.
Kevin?
Kevin, I and I.
Deirdre? Sorry you say you're muted, but Chris?
Chris, aye.
Thank you, all right, well. All right, thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Motion to adjourn?
No, we have two little ma- we have two other matters to deal with.
Oh, yeah, yeah, all right, I.
All right, so we, we, the first matter that's on, we have a matter on agenda and another one that's real quick that. Uh, didn't come up within forty-eight, it wasn't. Yeah, so the next is uh, one twenty-four Elm Street. For those uh. Who are new to the board, when we made our decision on. Uh, the, the hotel redevelopment, uh, there were certain easements that were gonna be needed. To uh. There was a view easement. That the bylaw required. Uh, the overlay bylaw to have preserve a straight line view down Elm Street. Uh, to the harbor as you're driving down Elm Street toward the harbor. There is also an easement for the public amenity areas, which is the continuation of the harbor walk. And a small public park that is on the applicant's property and so an easement to the town needed to be done. Uh, the drafting of easements. And the approval of easements is within the purview of the select board. Uh, they have reviewed that, I understand, with the help of Carolyn. Uh, I also know that there was, you know, a desire to wait to see if the chapter ninety-one process and the decision there had made any changes to our decision. So I, we're, we're being asked tonight to just make sure, and I think it was a, one of our conditions that we review these once, once they were done, but. Certainly the select board is asking us to uh, give our blessing to these two easements. Um, so if you looked at our website, you have sketches of where the view easement is uh, along Margin Street, Elm Street. And then uh, the other easement, as I said, is for the uh. Harbor Walk and the Public Park. Um, I'll start with Carolyn. Is there anything in particular that jumps out or that we need to be aware of, or does it, do these easements comply with what are the intent of our decision?
Uh, well, Mr. Chairman, thank you for that. As, as you know, my colleague, Sharon Everett. Who um, handles the real estate matters for her asset, so she was actually much more intimately involved. Um, with the preparation of the easements and the review to make sure they were consistent with your decision. I know her opinion is that um. The easements are consistent with your decision. And it was just a matter of um, the board, as you said, giving its blessing.
Thank you. Um, Ted and John, I don't know that you need to particularly add anything with, with that comment. I think this is. Pretty pro forma for us at this point. Um, I know any of the new members of the board, I, I, Deirdre called me about this today and I don't know if you've. Had a chance to look over the decision or, or understand what was going on there since you weren't there at the time. You can certainly vote on this tonight, but. I mean, for, for one, I haven't been there and part of that decision, I'm satisfied with this and satisfied that, you know, council has, has signed off on this, so. Without further ado, if anybody else doesn't have a comment, they'll take a motion that uh. We approve the um. The easements for the pub, for the, the view easement and the public amenity space easement as being consistent with our decision. Um, for this project.
Excuse me, Tom, I know you just made a motion, but um, are we recommending that the selectmen um, accept? The easements as shown in the sketches?
Yeah, yeah, I, I guess.
Approving them as consistent with uh, the intent of the bylaw and the decision that was made on the project.
Yeah, I think it's a two-part, thank you. It's, you know, we are approving them as consistent with our decision and with the overlay bylaw. And then also asking the selectmen. Recommending that the selectmen sign the necessary easement documents, so.
Right, cause that's their bailiwick.
So that'll be, that'll be, that'll be the motion, rather than have somebody repeat it. So anybody want to second that?
Second.
All right, thank you. All, all in favor, Clark?
Aye.
Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glass, I.
Terry? Kevin, keep your eyes on the road.
Hands on the wheel, Kevin.
Uh, Chris?
Chris Plex, aye.
All right, thank you. So Ted and John, unless you have anything else, I think we're all set. You're both muted, but I get right. You all set, Ted?
Yeah, I'll say.
All right, great. Thank, thank you. Thank you for coming and waiting this out tonight. Appreciate it. All right, um, there's one other matter we need to address, that again, I think was a request for us just to do something pro forma. Uh, it's wasn't anticipated within forty-eight hours. Lauren, could you just summarize what we're being asked to do?
Absolutely. So, uh, many of you may recall twelve Parking Way, it's the sort of parking lot tucked behind the twelve Parking Way building. That faces the town parking lot in the village. It's near um. The uh, used to be the boxing gym. Sort of that, that central parking lot area. Twelve Parking Way uh, received site plan approval from the planning board. They also received a special permit. Um, because during the site plan review process, it was determined that because they had. Were seeking live or mechanical entertainment that actually in the table of use. It goes to the planning board for a special permit. So they got both of those. They've been working over the past several months uh, with the select board on their liquor licensing. And to get their entertainment licenses.
Wow. You muted yourself, you muted yourself. Well, anyway. E- everyone, they, they. Yeah, this was the.
Sorry, my, my cat turned it off. Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Apologies, Milo is getting, uh, I, you can see I have the door open ventilation. Anyway. So uh, they've been going through a process, select board for liquor licensing to tie things up. And now what their latest hurdle has been is just the delay in processing for their container. And their permanent solution for what their plan is. So what they've proposed is a temporary solution. They reviewed the plan with John Allen. Um, you know, they have plans for when this will finally be. Ready, but in the meantime, their temporary solution will involve porta potties. They have. Um, whole sort of system involved and John has approved what they are doing on a temporary basis. The question that came about from the select board and from the town manager was to make sure the planning board didn't feel this was a major deviation from the plan. Um, and just to reiterate that this is going, it's not gonna be a permanent solution for what they're looking to do here. It's just because of their delay in the manufacturing of the. Custom container that they had uh, proposed in their original plans.
Lauren, I've, I've seen that set up in other places. It works well if there's screening or some kind of containment. Do you know if they're gonna have that?
For their, for their permanent solution?
Oh, sorry, for the, for the porta potties that would be there on an interim basis.
Yes, okay, yes. I do believe that there is a plan to have some provision of screening and they have a contract for weekly maintenance, so they plan to keep. As on top of it as, as. As on top of it as as will be available to them.
Okay, so it's not just gonna be a row of porta potties sitting in the parking lot?
No.
Okay.
That would make, that would make the whole experience unappetizing, I think. All right, so again, this is a temporary solution. It's a shame that they have missed most of the summer season with this, but, uh. All right, so I'll I'll make the motion that we approve the temporary use of porta potties under the direction of the. Uh, building inspector and the public health board. Um, as amendments to our decision on site, uh, the the site plan and special permits that we issued of whatever date they were issued, so. Second, somebody?
A second.
All right, all in favor? Clark?
Um, just one quick comment, do we wanna put a time limit on it, or just say, get them out of there as soon as possible?
I I imagine the project, I I imagine if they open, they're not gonna be open past. The fall, you know, so I think that the season is gonna put a time limit on them unless. I don't think they were gonna be open year round, so I I, you can, if you wanna add, you know, by, gone by November first, that's fine.
Okay, so that's just an amended motion?
Yeah.
Um, that's been seconded already, uh, I'll say aye.
All right, Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glass, aye.
Kevin, aye and aye.
Deidre Hobson, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Okay. Uh, before we go, Lauren, Ken. Carolyn, anybody else got something they need to bring up that wasn't anticipated forty-eight hours in advance? Now is your time.
Tom, just a question, uh, if if I have a question for Carolyn around, um. The scope of our responsibilities and our authority to approve or not approve projects, am I free to call Carolyn on that independently? Does that need to be recorded or in writing or anything?
No, I I I, just, just to keep control, just run it through me.
Yeah, I can do that.
But I mean, is it specifically with respect to large home review?
Exactly, so.
All right, well, Carolyn, you know, make you make, you know, rather than I was just focusing you on the scale of building criteria. You know, since, since we have new members, it's probably a good time to have a refresher course on what that bylaw. Does and doesn't do and what are the limits of our authority on it. Carol, uh, Mark, yes.
Thank you.
If you don't mind. If you don't mind, Carolyn.
No, that's fine.
All right, thank you, Chris. Yeah, go ahead.
Wanted to state that, um, this is actually something we've been wanting to schedule, but I've had a bit of scheduling. It's been a bit crazy with the past few months. We do wanna get scheduled training for the planning board, um, particularly, we do this every year, but. Particularly as we have three new members this year, I think it'd be a great opportunity to have a refresher for some of our existing members. Um, and it's an opportunity that we schedule typically, uh, no applications on a planning board meeting and have council. Debate a couple of things, not debate, go over a couple of things with you. If you have questions in advance, we'd be happy to get them, and that way we can sort of tailor the experience for you. So what I'll do is I'll plan to get that into our September schedule at some point. Um, that way we can, you know, if there's questions in in chat, Chris, please send them and we'll answer it, but we.
Yeah, the the way, the way, the way September seventh is looking right now, um. You know, we, you know, now that we've changed the zoning. Schedule, we're not gonna need to schedule section five hearings in October. Um, you know, if. You know, and I anticipate that on the seventh, we might still have continuances and some long and controversial projects, so. I'll leave it to the board's pleasure if a third meeting in October might be the solution to do this, I assume it would be relatively short. But as long, as long as we keep other matters off the, the agenda. Uh, but, uh. You know, we we can, we can talk about that. So our September schedule is September seventh to twenty-eighth and October is. But let's figure that out, but I, that's a good idea, but if if we continue to be this busy with. Longer projects that require longer discussions, we just might have to do an off night. Since you're, since you're no longer gonna be subjected to my rigorous fall schedule, depending. You're you're getting a reprieve of that, so. Uh, you know, work, work it in whenever you can, but. And Ca- Ca- Carolyn, you'll, I assume you'll be presenting that, and.
Yeah, and actually, Lauren and I, I I'm kind of chuckling because Lauren and I have exchanged, you know, dates so many times, um. Going back to, I think, April, and, uh, you know, for. One reason or another, the date just keeps getting, um, scratched in favor of something else, but I. I I do tend to recommend that, you know, you guys have a lot on your plate. I do think that most of these trainings, especially where you've got three new members of the board, um. These trainings typically run about an hour, and it all depends on how. Many questions folks have, and I tend to want to encourage you to ask questions because it's for your benefit. Um, so it might be better to schedule this, as you were saying, Tom, on an off night.
Yeah, it's just that everybody should be aware that, you know, in in my new timeline for. Town meeting and public forums and this and that, and Lauren and Cassandra are running how many committees at this point? Uh, I mean, I know, I I haven't talked about this, Chris, after the joint meeting, we can. You know, the the chair of the board can be. Given the host duties once the staffer, you know, gets the Zoom set up, but still, we have a lot of. Committee meetings, very active, uh, committees, a lot of stuff on the plate, and it's just tough to schedule everything. That's. That's really the problem right now because of the Zoom platform and the requirements of it. Uh, and then there's things that Lauren and or Cassandra simply need to be here, you know. No matter who hosts the the Zoom part of it. Um, you know, for the joint meeting was a start on the hybrid format. I told that, uh, Amy told me today that she could hear everything clear as a bell, so it seemed to have gone. Well, for the public to be able to hear us, so hopefully, you know, we'll get to that, but. You know, the other problem there is we only apparently have two sites in Cohasset that could, in the town that can do a Zoom, uh, a hybrid meeting, so. Um, you know, hopefully, we can get over these problems, but we'll try to schedule things as much as we can and get them in there. All right? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you for your attention to everything tonight.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Clark?
Clark, aye.
Tom Kelly and I.
Amy Glass, aye.
Kevin, aye and aye.
Deidre Hobson, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Okay, great, thank you all, and, uh. Enjoy your little break and see you on September seventh.